I just brought in some expert technical help. It's different because I think whoever has the meeting has taken over our screens and I couldn't figure out how to pop us out.
Pat, I got a little bit of advice from Janie.
Yeah.
In that if you go up into that grid view.
Yeah.
Click on it and then in the lower left-hand corners, you have the three little lines.
No. I'm sorry, I don't, that's not, I don't see what you're telling me.
In the little view that you have for each of the cameras and for the folks that are attending.
Yeah.
There's that little Rubik's Cube looking thing, which is your grid view. If you click on that.
Well, no, okay, I'm sorry, I just, I'm seeing, my screen says I'm seeing the city's screen. Does everyone else have that?
Yes, right.
And then I have popped this out, wait a minute, I don't want to do that.
And then do you have a split view where you see us on part of it and the city's screen on the other?
I don't know, I can, I can see everybody now. It's just not, I've not been on one like this before where someone else's, it just doesn't look like it has before, so. So it's all disconcerting because it does not have the same setup. Are we waiting for anybody else or should we get started? Do we have all our members here?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, we're all here. So should we call the order or are we, Arnie, you know if you're waiting for anybody else?
I don't believe so. You can go ahead and call the order and then I'll give the statement.
All right, so let's call this to order now that I kind of figured out what's going on here. This is the April 23rd, 2020 meeting of the Lexington Planning Commission. And in order to situate us, we'll let Arnie read a statement from the city.
Okay, this is a statement that we'll read into the record for each meeting that we hold electronically. Due to the COVID-19 pandemic, the city of Lexington is taking actions to minimize attendance at public meetings. An ordinance was approved by city council on April 2nd, 2020, in accordance with the Virginia Code, Section 15.2-1413, allowing any meeting which requires the physical presence of members of a public entity such as the planning commission to be held through real-time electronic means without a quorum physically present in one location. A notice of this meeting was posted to the city website and the meeting packet was also posted to the city website. This meeting will be broadcast to the city's Facebook page and then uploaded to the city's YouTube channel afterwards. We ask that each speaker identify themselves when speaking. All votes will be by roll call and recorded in the minutes. All members of the planning commission who leave the meeting or arrive must verbally note their attendance. Are there any questions on how this meeting will be run? From the planning commission?
This is Pat, no.
Would you send a copy of that statement to each of us by email, please?
Will do. And I'm going to now take attendance. Chair Bradley.
Present.
Vice Chair Griscoe.
Present.
Commissioner Gooden.
Unmute yourself, Jamie.
Present.
Commissioner Miller.
Here.
Commissioner Chester.
Present.
Commissioner Strawn.
Present.
Commissioner Tuckler.
Present.
And we do have a quorum. Mr. Chairman, please proceed.
All right, this is Pat Bradley. We've had our call to order and our statement. So we'll talk about approval of the agenda. Hopefully everyone's had a chance to look through it and do we have any, by the, um, by the way, what we'll try to do is, as we run this, if you maybe raise, this is going to be difficult for everybody. If you raise your hand when you want to speak and I'll kind of call on you and see if that will work so we know and then identify ourselves. So we're talking about the approval of the agenda. Would anyone like to make any corrections, suggestions? Yes, Camille.
Pat, I believe that John has an addition to the agenda.
Okay, is that true, John?
Yes. I had for other business or however, we should put it in a discussion, two points. Arnie, do you remember them? I had the, I mean, I know what they are, but I sent you a.
I do have them. If you hold on just a second.
Okay.
I will find that email. The first point being an update to the comp plan and discussions on how to proceed. And the second item being an update for us to talk about the Berkeley contract and how that may affect or impact the comp plan.
This is Pat. John, is that, uh, one, I'm going to ask John, is that sound right to you, John?
Yes.
Okay, good. Camille?
I've moved to approve the agenda with the additions noted.
Well, okay, before that, I was going to, I think we need to talk about maybe a couple of things on the agenda, Arnie. Do we, are we going to leave off a couple of the hearings, Arnie?
Correct. There is going to be a request from, and we can get to that when we get down to B and C, but the applicant is requesting that B and C be deferred. We can do that at that point. And then I'd also like to have a discussion during other comments about public input for the comp plan. Just like to start that discussion on how we will have public input once the comp plan draft is finalized.
So, Arnie, this is Pat. So again, should we be identifying ourselves by name every time we speak? Is that right?
Yeah, that's actually a good plan.
All right, so this is Pat. Arnie, do we need to remove the, from the agenda, the two hearings concerning the Marshall Museum and the BMI grounds?
If you don't mind, I would like to leave them on. That way I can explain why we need to defer those to the next meeting.
So we'll leave those on and under other business, we're going to add an update to the comp plan process, how we're going to proceed and how we're going to solicit public input. And then we're going to talk about the role of the Berkeley group moving forward. If I have that right, does that sound right to folks and is there anything else that we need to look at on the agenda? Okay, so Camille, you want to make that movement again, or that motion again with the additions?
Certainly, I move to approve the agenda with the additions as noted.
Thank you, Camille. John?
Second.
John seconds. We've got a motion and a second all in favor. So we'll do, Arnie, would you like me to do a roll call vote or would you like to do that? Should I?
It's up to you. Sorry, this is Arnie. You can either do that or we can also have Bonnie do that if you prefer.
I'll just do that. Let's do a roll call vote on approving of the agenda. And I'm not sure if I can remember what alphabetical order it is, so I'll just go, leave order on my screen. John?
Yes, I.
Camille?
Hi.
Leslie?
Hi.
Blake? Matt?
Hi.
Jamie? You're still on mute, Jamie.
Hi.
Okay, and I for Pat Bradley as well, so that passes. The next item is the approval of minutes from the March 12th meeting. And hopefully you've all had a chance to look at those minutes and do we need any corrections, additions, notifications? Camille?
Pat moved to approve the minutes for the meeting of March 12th, 2020 as presented.
This is Leslie and I second it.
Okay, we've got a motion and a second. Do a roll call vote again, on, in favor or not. John?
I.
Camille?
I.
Leslie?
I.
Blake?
I.
Matt? You're on mute, Matt.
I.
Jamie?
Hi.
Pat says I, so that's unanimous. Now we'll move on to the citizens' comments on matters not on the agenda. And I see here there are some folks in attendance virtually who are not on the commission, so would any of those like to comment on any matters that are not on the agenda? Okay, see.
No comment, draws out.
Okay, seeing and hearing nobody. We will close the citizens' comments on matters not on the agenda. And we will move on to new business. The first order of new business being an application by Steel Lexington LLC for a site plan review for the Lexington House at 130 Houston Street. Arnie will give us a staff report.
This is Arnie. We do have on the first page of your staff report, and I do apologize, the entire PDF was not numbered from beginning to the end, which would have been a little bit helpful. Apologize for that. But on your first page, there's a bit of history there. You have seen this particular staff or site plan request before. Earlier this year, we have new owners of the Lexington House Apartments. They have proposed changes, amendments to their site plan. The last time what you saw was primarily changes for six new parking spaces for handicap parking. They are now requesting four additional items and I'll read through those. The first one is a material change for the dumpster enclosure material. The dumpster is on the northern part of the subject parcel and it is a dumpster with, that is completely enclosed. Last time they were proposing to enclose it with a six-foot-high wooden shadow box fence and they're proposing to change that to a six-foot-tall white vinyl fence. That's the first item. The second item is the addition of a trash facility for the handicap apartments. On the site plan, they are proposing to add a small area, I believe it's four by four or five by five, with a three-sided fence with two trash cans in there. And that would be for the handicap units only. So those folks would have a shorter distance to travel for their trash. That would then be picked up and taken by staff to the actual dumpster, which is further away. The third item is the addition of a smoking patio at the flagpole, around the flagpole previously, which is the little circular area at the entrance to the building that had just a flagpole with, I believe, some grass. The proposal now is to pave some of that, have a bench and designate that as a smoking area. The fourth item is the removal of a short section of sidewalk that is really just an extra sidewalk. It is, by the extra, I mean, to one side of that, there is already an existing walkway in front of some of the units, so that section of sidewalk is really extra and not needed and therefore it's being proposed to be removed. Those are the four changes to the site plan, if I can answer any questions.
Arnie, this is Leslie. Can you show, show us on maybe the last drawing, just where that little section of sidewalk is? I wasn't quite sure what part that was.
Okay, Bonnie can just slide down to the last page of this. Of the application for this report. I'm not sure if, can you see a yellow? Right there, Bonnie? To the left of the circle, you'll see a section that is denoted for change just to the left of Bonnie's cursor.
I'm not seeing the screen for the.
Is everybody able to see the screen showing the site plan?
I can see it right now, yes.
If Bonnie, if you can move your mouse or your cursor just a little bit to the left of where you are now, to that area that looks like shrubbery, in other words, it has, where Bonnie is now pointing, that area that's denoted by what looks like shrubbery to me, but it's actually just denoting where changes are on the site plan. That area is where the sidewalk would be removed. It's hard to see, but just to the north of that is the front of the apartments and that has the walkway that goes in front of them and it's also covered. So that would be the sidewalk that folks can use. It's only a few feet removed and it's covered.
Okay.
All right, this is Pat. Any other questions for Arnie? Okay, we can see if the applicant would like to make a statement.
Yes, this is Evan Worley with Perkins and Orson, representing the developers of the project. So the removal of that additional sidewalk, the material change in the dumpster enclosure and the addition of the ADA trash area were all changes that the Virginia Housing Authority dictated needed to happen when the project was reviewed for compliance with their regulations and associated funding. They don't allow shadow box fences that are wooden and they deemed that that sidewalk was additional and they wanted it removed. So that's why we came back with the material change, the additional trash facility and the removal of the sidewalk, the smoking area. The owners felt that they needed to provide that since there was one there now. That's why we added it back in.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Worley. This is Pat. Do we, anybody have any questions for the applicant? All right, see, no questions. So we will see if there's any public comment on this, if anybody is in present virtually here. Speak up, no, okay, then we will bring it back to the commission for discussion and recommendation. Do we have anybody who would like to discuss, recommend?
Yeah, this is Matt Tuckler calling.
Okay, Matt.
Is there anything that we need to pay attention to in this, Arnie? It looks kind of, you know, run-of-the-mill stuff, but is there anything that we need to be sensitive to that you see here?
Specific to?
This.
Well, we, in the last go-around, and I didn't cover much of it this time, in the last go-around, we talked about screening materials from this property to the next. There's already a good bit of screening to the existing trees that provide screening to adjacent R1 zone properties. So all of that's really been covered. These are minor changes in my mind to the site plan that was already approved, so I don't believe that we're missing anything.
Thank you.
Yes, Camille, go ahead.
It's Camille and I'm moved to approve site plan number SP 2020-04 and find the submitted site plan to be in compliance with the zoning ordinance.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Leslie has it.
Leslie has the second. Okay, this is Pat again. We're ready to call for a vote in favor. John?
I.
Camille?
I.
Leslie?
I.
Blake?
I.
Matt?
I.
Jamie?
Hi.
And I for Pat, unanimous. Thank you very much. Thank you very much, Mr. Worley. We'll move on now to our second order of new business, which is the application by the Pauli Levin Good for comprehensive plan amendment for the George C. Marshall Museum. And should we just put that together with the rezoning application as well? These is items B and C. And Arnie will tell us about the status of these.
And this is Arnie. There is a request by the applicant to defer both of these items, B and C, to your next meeting. And that is because it was misadvertised. You saw this application, both the comp plan amendment, the rezoning and the site plan, because there was a request for changing the boundary lines that actually drove all three. You approved all of it, recommended approval of all of those. There was a new request from the applicant to change their requested zoning designation. They had requested C2. You reviewed C2. You recommended approval of the C2 zoning district for this property. They have since amended their request to C1. My advertisement of C1, I put that in the advertisement, but did not update the corresponding future land use designation that's needed. So there's the advertisement that went forward with the commercial designation when it actually should have gone forward with the mixed-use designation. So it was misadvertised for the comprehensive plan amendment. Spoke with, and luckily, one of the planning commissioners realized that prior to this meeting. I spoke with the applicants and gave them two options and they would prefer that this be deferred to your next meeting. I do have sufficient time to advertise for your next planning commission meeting on 14th and advertise it with both the comp plan designation and the rezoning. So the applicant is requesting that this be deferred, if there's a motion for that.
Okay, thank you, Arnie. Would anyone like to make a motion to defer these two items to our next meeting? Camille?
I'm moved.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Leslie, Leslie second. Sorry, Blake, she was a little faster there. Uh, in favor of the motion, John?
I.
Camille?
I.
Leslie?
I.
Blake?
I.
Matt? Matt, are you muted? Unmute, Matt, we got to hear your voice.
I just, yes.
Yes, good. And Jamie?
Hi.
Okay, good. So those two items will be deferred. We'll move on to our next item of new business, which is an application concerning a planned use development. Application by Max Mark Holmes and Weatherburn Holdings to amend the planned unit development zoning for Weatherborne subdivision. Arnie, staff report?
And this is Arnie. I would also recommend that we open both public hearings for the planned unit development 2020-01 and also the preliminary subdivision 2020-04, because they are, in essence, the same request.
That sounds good to me, me being Pat.
Okay, those will be considered to be open together. And again, after we get through the public hearing portion, you may want, you should then separate out the votes for each of these. You see on page one of the planned unit development staff report, Bonnie can scroll down to that part. You will see the outline or the plan for Weatherburn, the individual parcels. The stars are indicating the lots that are being proposed to be amended. Bonnie, if you could slide down to the graphic on the bottom of page two. The request is really to amend a number of lots, not the entire PUD, but just a number of lots. What you see there on the bottom of page two is the existing planned unit development and the planned unit development modification plan that was approved in 2015. What they're proposing this time is on the bottom of page three. Bonnie, if you don't mind. And I'm going to go from left to right. In other words, on the left-hand side of that, we have lot number 11 and lot number 12. The proposal there is to shorten those lots and there would be 0.051 acres of additional open space that you see towards the back of those lots. Sliding further around the curve, lot number 17 and lot number 18 are proposed to be lengthened back to the rear property line. And that would decrease the amount of open space by 0.031 acres, so that the open space is not split, so it would be continuous. There's also proposed three-foot-wide walking easement across the back of lots number 17 and 18. Addition to that, we are now coming down the right-hand side of Chamberlain Loop. You see revised lot number 22, 23, 24, 25, and 26. The idea there is to even up those lots so that they're more equal in size. And the other part of that is you see a small wedge that was open space between lot number 22 and 23. That would be given over largely to lot number 22. So we are really talking about boundary line adjustments, but because this planned unit development is also tied to this planned unit development plan, we need to modify the planned unit development plan as well as the approving a preliminary subdivision for these boundary line adjustments. We did have two comments along, those are included in the back of your packet. One is from the homeowners association president and they are in favor, or in support of this amendment to both the PUD and the boundary line adjustment. Then we also have Steve McAllister, who is responding on both the behalf of WL. WL owns a few condos adjacent to basically lots number 11 and 12. And Mr. McAllister has a private residence that is in the county along the Birdfield subdivision and he backs up to the rear of lots 17 and 18 and he's also in favor. That's all I have for a presentation.
All right, this is Pat. Thank you, Arnie. Does anybody have any questions for Arnie before we see if we have an applicant statement? Camille?
Yeah, this is Camille. Arnie, question I have is, I read Steve McAllister's request as a private citizen and what are your opinions, what is your opinion about making any provisions in the approval to honor his request?
I'm reading through his request just a second.
He pretty much wants to ensure additional screening, which he's happy to have on his property. But we would like for Max Mark to ensure that happens. Your response was, it may not be problematic. So the question back to you is, it, what is the latitude for planning commission to acknowledge and act on Mr. McAllister's request?
I would not be supportive of the request to do off-site improvements. In other words, having the applicant do something not only, not on his property, but also out in another jurisdiction, I think would not be ideal. There is also, unfortunately not in your packet, an aerial view of this parcel. And if I could show that, and I would be able to show you that the back of his parcel is very well screened and wooded. He has a fairly large parcel and the backs of, would be additional length of lot number 17 and 18 will allow building to be about six or 10 feet closer to the rear of his property. He has substantial vegetation between the rear of his house and the rear of lots number 17 and 18. Therefore, I would not recommend any additional screen to be required of the applicant.
Pat, this is Camille. Thank you, Arnie. That's very helpful.
Okay, are there any other questions for Arnie? This is Pat speaking. All right, so do we have an applicant statement?
Max.
Max Ivanov, you are on mute.
I think staff has covered the application quite thoroughly. There is no additional comment from the applicant.
Okay, would you, just for the record, would you give us your full name and address, please?
Yes, Max Ivanov, AD Littleville Drive, Lexington, Virginia.
Thanks very much, Mr. Ivanov.
Thank you.
Okay, so we will see if there is any public comment on, Leslie, he's raising your hand.
To Max?
Yes.
I'll do that later.
You could ask, you could ask now before we move on to public comment, if that's all right, Mr. Ivanov.
That's okay. I just wanted to know, I just wanted to verify that all these lots are currently vacant and not built on?
Um, actually, lots 11, 12, 17, and 18 already have structures on them. So there is already a footprint that complies with previous PUD application approved in 2015. So this change will not affect those structures.
Okay, and do you? Okay. And, and do you, does your company currently own all these parcels? Are they, are any of them under contract, or you, you own?
Uh, which, I'm sorry, you referring to the parcels that are being amended, or the parcels of the neighborhood?
Just the ones being amended?
We own most of the parcels here, correct. So the only parcel that is not owned by Max Mark, I believe, is lot 11, and that's owned by another entity, Weatherburn Holdings LLC.
And do we hear, and this might be a question for Arnie, did we hear with Weatherburn LLC if this is okay with them?
Um, he was. Max, remind me, is that Custis?
Yeah, so the, the registered agent for Weatherburn Holdings LLC is Custis Coleman, and actually, the application was submitted from both Weatherburn Holdings LLC and Max Mark Homes.
And that's for both applications?
Correct.
Sorry, this is, that was Arnie.
And this is Pat also. I think the, the homeowner, was there a homeowners association that also said they were okay with this, that we had a statement?
Yeah, this is Arnie. That is correct. In your packet, we have an email from Christine Train. She is the homeowners association president, and it says, we as the board and as the homeowners association have reviewed the changes and are in full support of them. We have no objection to having any changes approved by the city and implemented by Mr. Ivanov.
All right. This is Pat. Thanks, Arnie. If there are no further questions for Mr. Ivanov, at this point, we can open up for public comment. If there's anybody who would like to virtually comment. Hearing and seeing none, we'll close that public comment period and see if we have a discussion and recommendation from the commission. You ever raise your hand if you would like. Camille, go ahead.
Pat, the question I have for you is, I understand holding a joint hearing on this piece, but are we treating the motion separately?
Uh, this is Pat. Yeah, so we will, we'll separate those out and do them as separate motions.
So I'd like to move to approve the amendment to Weatherburn Planned Unit Development Application, PUD 2020-01, as presented by the applicant.
Do we have a second?
Second is Matt Tucker.
Is that you, Matt?
Yeah.
You got Matt in there for the second. Uh, okay, is, if there's no further discussion on this or comment, we will go to a roll call vote. John?
Aye.
Camille?
Aye.
Leslie?
Aye.
Blake?
Aye.
Matt?
Aye.
Jamie?
Aye.
And Pat makes an a unanimous. And then for the preliminary subdivision application, any further discussion or a motion? Camille?
Move to approve preliminary subdivision application, PS 2020-04 for the re-subdivision of Weatherbird, Weatherburn, in accordance with the plat showing re-subdivision of Weatherburn completed by Perkins and Orson dated 2/11/2020.
Thank you, Camille.
Second is Blake.
Blake, Blake seconds.
Got it.
Got in there fast. Seeing no further, hearing no further, call for discussion.
May I have a discussion? This is Matt. I, I think this looks great. I have a question with how this was advertised. I know we're hearing from the homeowners association and, and some of the neighbors, but was there an effort to, are we allowing the homeowners association to replace, in terms of contact, the voice of the individuals, or do the individuals get some kind of notice that this was happening? I don't have a problem with that. I just wanna know how it was asserted.
This is Arnie. It was advertised as we do with all of them, in that there was a posting of the property. There was adjacent property owner notices and ad in the paper. So everyone did have an opportunity that lives there to either see, receive the notice, or see the posting, or see the ad in the paper. I didn't get, did not receive any questions or concerns from anybody else, and only heard from the two folks that we've already discussed.
Okay, thank you very much.
Okay, so, hey, this is not a public comment, but just to provide some background information. There was a roll call by the HOA sent out to all the members of the community to provide feedback and questions slash support for this application prior to providing the support letter to the staff. So the resulting letter from this train was actually drafted after the poll was conducted in the community, and the direction for the community was decided by its members.
Okay, great. Thank you, Mr. Ivanov.
Thank you.
Okay. So we'll move to a roll call vote. John?
Aye.
Camille?
Aye.
Leslie?
Aye.
Blake?
Aye.
Matt?
Aye.
Jamie?
Aye.
And this is Pat. I'll make it unanimous with aye. Okay, thank you very much, Mr. Ivanov. We will now move on to our next order of new business, which is an application by June P. Patterson for a preliminary subdivision to adjust the boundary lines of 19 Hook Lane and 112 Smith Street. Arnie will give us a staff report.
This is Arnie. Ms. Patterson, and I believe a family member of hers are the co-applicants here. We do have a request for a boundary line adjustment for non-Hook Lane and 112 Smith Street. And you can see the, on the location map there, the Hook Lane property in particular has an odd shape. It's kind of a reversed C, and it wraps around all the way uphill to Smith Street. Both of these properties are currently for sale, and the owners would like to sort of even up the property lines. So you see the sort of shape of non-Hook Lane there, and if you don't mind, Bonnie, going to the next page. And you see how that would be evened up a little bit more. So the house that's facing Smith Street is on a property that completely faces Smith Street, and the same thing for Hook Lane. So it's really a boundary line adjustment between those two properties. We do have Ms. Patterson, the applicant, with us.
Do, thank you, Arnie. Do we have any questions for Arnie before we would hear from the applicant? Okay, good. So would the applicant care to make a statement, Ms. Patterson?
No, I don't have anything to say. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Patterson. Public comment, open up for public comment. If there's anyone who would like to speak up. Seeing here, there's a telephone. No, okay, I'm gonna have a call in. So we will close public comment period and have some discussion and recommendation among the commission, from the commission. Would anyone like to weigh in? Camille?
Move to approve the preliminary subdivision application, PS 2020-05, for the adjustment boundary lines between 112 Smith Street and 19 Hook Lane, in accordance with the boundary line adjustment survey for the JP Patterson and Nina Jean Page Beach, completed by Troutland Survey.
Do we have a second?
Second.
But Leslie just seconded. Thank you, Leslie. Do we have any discussion on this application among the commission? Okay, not hearing any, so I will take it to a roll call. We'll go to John?
Aye.
Camille?
Aye.
Leslie?
Aye.
Blake?
Aye.
Matt? Matt, are you muted?
Yeah, aye, aye.
Matt says aye. Jamie?
Aye.
Jamie says aye, and Pat will make it unanimous with an aye. Okay, thank you very much, Ms. Patterson, for, for coming in virtually. And, uh, hope you enjoyed the show and good luck with the, with the sales.
Thank you so much.
Okay. All right. Next on the list, we have a preliminary subdivision 2020-06, an application by LW Nighting for preliminary subdivision to vacate lot lines for 54 parcels on the VMI post. Arnie, would you care to explain this one to us?
Sure, we have an application by Mr. Nighting with Draper Aiden Associates to vacate boundaries for those 54 parcels. On page one, the location map, as best we could, we trying to show you where all those parcel boundaries are. They happen to be underneath the current core physical training facility, and that will also be under, once it's built, the aquatic center that VMI has already proposed. So what you see is the outline of, of what they're proposing, to have one larger parcel as opposed to having those 54 individual parcels underneath. Question had come up, why are they doing this? Normally, you could not build a structure across property boundaries, because you would obviously be violating setbacks. But VMI being a state entity, they do not have to get building permits from the city. I did reach out to Mr. Lawhorn over at VMI, and his response was that they had a recommendation from the Office of the Attorney General that the combination would facilitate the issuance of title insurance. So it's for the title insurance reason that they're requesting, primarily that they're requesting all of these lots be put together into one parcel.
Thanks, Arnie. Are there any questions for Arnie from the commission? Okay, seeing none at this time. Thanks, Arnie. We'll see, would the applicant like to make a statement?
This is Jeff Lawhorn from VMI. I don't have anything to add unless someone has a question.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Lawhorn. This is Pat. Again, Leslie wants to ask a question, I believe. Go ahead.
Does the parcel include only, are all the parcels owned by VMI, or there's not any owned by Nykirk Holdings, are there?
The, the, the map you see, Nykirk doesn't hold anything within that red boundary. What isn't reflected there is a small, I think it's 15-foot by 15-foot parcel owned by Columbia Gas. There's a little brick building. If you look up, you could drive by and not even see it, but it's there on the hillside. They are in the process of abandoning that facility. In fact, that's why Times Main Street was closed last month, when they were putting a new gas line in. Once they have that abandoned and meet some state required, I think, environmental inspections, we will be doing a property transfer with them. It technically is not part of this parcel, because we don't own it today. So it will be a standalone, just a little dot right there in the middle of that larger parcel.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lawhorn. Oh, this is Pat. Oh, I'm sorry. This is Pat. Would that, would that teeny tiny little parcel affect the title insurance? Or will we have to come back and get that one adjusted as well, Arnie or Mr. Lawhorn?
The, the title insurance policy that we'll have will not include that, because we don't own it right now. And we do take ownership of that. We'll have a separate policy for that. I think from the attorney's standpoint, if we didn't do the consolidation, the title insurance company would have to issue us, I forgot that number, 59 individual policies for each lot. But by consolidating, they'll issue us one, that one large parcel. And we've already done all the, we've already completed all the title work on all those policies and actually had to clean up a few things that we found.
Great. Thank you, Ms. Lawhorn. Did I, did someone else want to speak? I felt like I talked over somebody. No?
Yeah, I have a question with Mr. Lawhorn. Is that building, I, I know it's, it's a pump house. Is there, it used to be a pump house? Is that the one I'm thinking of?
It's a, yeah, I think they call it a, maybe a transfer station. I think the gas company, it may have something to do with a certain pressure, gas lines come in, and then they get stepped down to a lower pressure, but it's, it's all Columbia Gas facilities within that small building. You can see it on that map. It just moved up. It's that little square. Kind of the, just off-center to the left.
Okay.
Great, thank you. Okay. And we will open up for public comment. If there's any public here. All right, seeing, hearing none. We will close the public comment period and commence to discuss and recommend amongst ourselves. Camille?
Move to approve the preliminary subdivision application, PS 2020-06, in accordance with the lot line vacation plat dated 3/10/2020, completed by Draper Aiden Associates.
Do we have a second?
This is Blake. I second.
All right, Blake. Thank you very much. Any further comment or question?
All right. One comment. One comment, underscore. Just, it's fascinating to, historically, to look at that map and realize how many plots there were. That was a neighborhood that came down the hill. So just, it's just, I didn't realize that, and you know, it'll be lost to history. But it doesn't affect the decision. It's just an observation.
Thanks, John.
That was, this is Matt Tucker.
Okay, Matt, and then Camille. Go ahead, Matt.
I'm sorry, I thought I had my hand raised.
Yeah, you're, okay. Oh, I thought that was clapping. I'm sorry.
Was that clapping or that?
I thought you were clapping that Blake did a second. Okay, go ahead, Matt. I'm sorry.
Is it any historic significance to that structure that we need to pay attention to before we move forward to what will ultimately be a consolidation? And once it gets into state property, that we don't really have oversight over that as a community anymore. So is there a historic significance to, because it's a beautiful little building, but if it's what I'm thinking about?
Arnie or Mr. Lawhorn, any thoughts on that?
It's about, I guess, beauty is in the eye of the beholder. I'm not sure if he's thinking about the same thing.
I may not be bringing, thinking about the same building.
Yeah, it's a really small, little brick building. I can't remember. I, I wanna think it was maybe in the 30s or 40s. Could it be, could have been the 20s when the original, when, when we've looked at the deeds when Columbia Gas purchased that, that little property from what was at that time, you know, a, a, probably a home. It was just a corner of a lot to construct that. I, I, yeah, I have no idea as far as, I don't think it's not any, of any historical significance. Certainly not like the American Legion Building, you know, that's down on Main Street, that type thing.
Thank you, Ms. Lawhorn. Camille, did you have your hand up?
Yeah, I did. I wanna build on John's comment for a moment. I first wanna say, I think VMI did a phenomenal job with the core training facility. It certainly is, um, in a class of its own. But to John's comment, I think it is historically significant, the decisions the city made during the process of integrating schools. Accounted for the initial decimation of a large part of that neighborhood when middle-class African-Americans had no employment opportunity and had to leave as a result of those decisions. So it's, it really is, to your point, John, an important historical point in Lexington's history. Just wanted to add that.
Thank you, Camille.
Mr. Chair, if I could?
Yes, Arnie.
This is Arnie. Getting back to the question about the historical significance of that building, I don't have a picture of it in my mind, but that if it's part of the VMI historic district, then they would have to go to the state potentially for any sort of removal or alteration of that, if that's in their plans. So it depends on whether or not it is part of their historic district or not.
So you're saying it would be, this is Matt Tucker. You're saying if it is recognized as historic, and VMI does take it over, purchase the property to consolidate, then they would have a burden by this, that imposed by the state to respond to any kind of modifications because of the historic content?
This is Arnie. That's correct. That's my understanding.
Okay, thank you.
Great. This is Pat. Thank you very much. We did have a motion in the second, so we'll go to the roll call vote. John?
Aye.
Camille?
Aye.
Leslie?
Aye.
Blake?
Aye.
Matt?
Yes.
Jamie? That says aye as well, unanimous. Thank you very much. Thanks, Mr. Lawhorn for coming, coming out virtually. And we'll move on to other business. First, I'm going to stand up and let the little dog out of my office who is starting to growl.
That's one of the problems, the whole COVID, when your kids come home and they start behaving, those old behaviors that you used to think of as nothing, now they become growling.
That was a dog, not my child. Yeah, that's.
Oh, okay. I'm sorry.
It was an actual dog. All right. So now we will move on to other business. We have two items. And we're not coming to any final decisions on these this evening. We're going to, the first bit is to talk about where the, where we are in the process that has now been upended, slowed down, and, and the big part of that process, how we're going to get public input, given the limitations of public gatherings. And I think we had been planning, thinking we were going to have a, a public forum of some kind in May, and that clearly is out the window now. So I think this is kind of a, kind of a brainstorming session that we'll, we'll each get out our ideas, I think, and try to get a handle on where we see this going. But I don't think we're making any decisions this evening. And so.
Chair, if I could just clarify.
Yeah, sorry.
There are three parts of this, if I'm not mistaken. Two of them are from John. And the first part of that is an update on the comp plan and discussion suggestions on how to proceed. And I'm going to ask that that be separate from how do we proceed with the public input portion of it. So that's two parts. And then the third part is, John has a specific question about the Berkeley Group contract. So I would suggest that we first talk about the comp plan and how we're going to move forward on finalizing that from the Planning Commission. And speaking with Drew and Kelly earlier this week, what we're proposing to provide to you on May 8th is the entire draft in a Word document so that you would get the entire comp plan with all the chapters on May 8th with the idea of the first meeting in May, we talked about the first half of that. And then the second meeting, you were able to review the second half. Then the first meeting in June, we would bring that back to you in a nicer format with all the changes that you've made in the first two meetings in a nicer format. I mean, it may not be a Word document. It may be InDesign or something else, but something that has a nicer formatting to it. And then hopefully we can schedule something, figure out what it is. And that's the third part of the discussion for us, is that how are we going to have that input? So again, what we're proposing is all the chapters be provided to you. And then in the first meeting in May, you talk about the first half of that. And then the second meeting in May, you do your discussion on the second half of those chapters.
Okay, this is Pat. All right, Arnie. So that, that sounds good to me. But these are two parts. So first, we'll talk about the, the, the the chapters of the comp plan and how we're going to address those. Okay, so anyone want to raise their hand or? Yes, John?
Arnie, thank you. I mean, that's basically what I wanted to, to know. I thought we would all benefit from is how, you know, what were the plans to complete it? And I think that sounds reasonable. This is a good time to focus on the technical issues, clean up the chapters, the wording, you know, all of those things that I know they'll be doing. So that, that, that sounds like a good schedule for us. So May 8th, we would get the entire draft and then we discuss the first. So we really have to, we have a week to focus on the first part, right?
Right. And you've seen all of this before, so it's really a review, but you're seeing it all together for the first time.
That's, that'll be the difference, is the first time we've seen it together. Yeah. Okay. And then if we have comments, so we have a week. Basically, I'm going back to how Kelly and Drew ran the meetings before, which were effective. So we essentially have a week to, to give comments on that first section for the meeting. Yeah.
Okay. Okay. This is Pat. I have, I have a question. Does it, when we discuss half in one meeting and half in the other, should we do it by just the first half chapters? Or second half of the chapters that we'd want to kind of group together and look at in one week? Would it make more sense to anybody's mind to, to group, you know, to not just say the first half of the chapters?
Yeah, it's not the first. It's chapters one through.
Yeah, just, so just take it that way chronologically. Okay. Is everyone okay with that? I just want to say, I didn't have any idea in mind. Okay, good. All right, other, yeah, Leslie.
I was just gonna say, I think that works well. And that way we can, if we read through it and something sounds awkward and we should move a chapter, we can figure it out that way. But I think it sounds good to go through the chapters in order.
Good, okay. Good. Thanks, Leslie.
Are, this is Matt Tucker calling, talking. Are we going to be wed to the order of the, the sequence of the chapters? Is that there because of what we inherited from the last plan? And then we're expanding that because we're adding a chapter. But are we, are we going to be wed to that? Because I'm wondering if when we see, then I just think about seeing it all as a group, we'll actually be able to see, ah, this is the storyline. This is what we were trying to do, what we were trying to accomplish in terms of how it goes through and how, how it evolves. And I'm wondering if that, even though it's chapter 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, et cetera, the chapter number, unless it's a necessary part in terms of the order of, of some kind of story we're trying to tell, that it does indicate some kind of weighting of, I, I feel like it will be perceived that. And I may be wrong about that. I mean, Leslie has, has been around this, seen a lot more than I have and Arnie has too. John has, everybody has. But I, I'm just wondering if we, I mean, we're going to be grouping this first group together and then grouping the second group together. And then I think we should, with that, as we're moving forward, keep in mind, what is the story we're trying to tell? And does this achieve that?
Right. So this, this, okay, go ahead, Camille.
I just want to come in in support of what Matt just said, and that is, I think that's exactly right. We have the opportunity to change chapter orders if there is a compelling storyline that we think is stringing for the comprehensive plan. And, and what I like at this point is the ability to review everything gives us a chance to see if the strategies flow consistently, chapter to chapter. The other one that I like, I, I do like Matt's idea of considering that order. But the other thing that I would like for us to consider in this final review of getting close to it is a lot of what we voted on today, the applications refer to the comprehensive plan that currently exists as the rationale supporting the presentation of these amendments. And I'd like for us to keep that in mind when we're reviewing the strategies and the goals, is these will come back before Planning Commission next year as rationale for various applications and to review to make sure that those rationales are things we want to see coming before us.
Right.
Thank you.
Yeah, that makes a lot of sense. Thank you. Good. So I, okay, so what I'm hearing is we're going to go in order as it is now, but as, as Leslie and then Matt and Camille said, we're, we want to keep in mind, is this the order we want? And that's can be part of our discussion about how we want to make it look when it's all together, because we've been doing it kind of piecemeal. And then keeping in mind, as Camille said, how this will, how it will work as a tool for us when we, when we do use in our decision. So good. Any other comments, questions about how we're going to see the, the draft and see it through to a, a final draft that we're going to put out there? Okay, so let's talk about then, we're going to have to rethink how we're going to get public input, given the changed circumstances. And do we have any thoughts, ideas? Jamie has his hand up. I thought we might, this might be our guy.
Hi.
Jamie.
This is Jamie. I have a number of thoughts. The first one is, Arnie, what are, or any other, or Leslie, or any other governmental bodies that are doing public hearings around the state or in whatever circles y'all swim in? Doing anything particularly effective?
This is already not that I'm aware of. This is so new that folks are trying to do their best with Zoom and other formats, but I'm not aware of a best case scenario right now. What we were trying to do is start this conversation with you because it is an unusual situation or an unusual time. So we're certainly not looking for a response now, but just to start thinking about how can we go about in our current situation, getting the best amount or the most, getting a lot of public input for this draft plan. So we can start thinking about it now and then maybe we have some suggestions in the next two meetings on how to go forward. It's just an unusual time and we have to figure out something.
This is Jamie. Thanks, Arnie. Two more thoughts. The first is, in the format of a public forum, are, are the rules, they're not as rigid, or they're as rigid as however we decide they are, unlike meetings like this. That is, there are no mandates for who is able to speak when. It's not, it's a lot more fluid. If that's correct, then my final thought, thought is, there are a number of technologies, I'm sure Blake knows some as well, that could solve this. And I think this is a tremendous opportunity to have a dramatically increased amount of public engagement for this particular issue. Especially, for example, if we need a Facebook Live situation, we worked out the logistics of public commenting. There'd be a monitor person to manage those and assist them and set up rules for sequence. That is, if someone makes a comment, they're put into a queue and then someone else tells, gives us the questions or whatever in that order. There's rules around that. And that could be a tremendous opportunity for massive engagement that in-person meeting about the comprehensive plan will never get.
Hey, thanks, Jamie. Now, Camille, I saw your hand up before, before we get to, to Camille. I, I think might this be one of the situations where we kind of deputize a couple sub-members of the commission to talk about that, those who have the, have the skill set to, to brainstorm as Jamie was just laying out, how we can best do this. And it seems like probably Jamie and Blake is, I don't know, it seems to be in their wheelhouse more, but I don't want to limit anybody. But is that something where do we, would we make a, say, here's an official subcommittee and Jamie and Blake are going to kind of put their heads together and they have a chance to brainstorm on how this can work? Does that sound good?
I think, this is Matt talking. I think it's, it sounds really good. The concern I have is that I, I feel like there's a reason, there was some kind of state rule that's not applying right now because we're in COVID time, right? But there's, there was some kind of guidance or directive that prevented us from doing this kind of engagement, the, the, I don't know, either being Zoom meetings or being Facebook, however you want. And I, I do worry a little bit about, you know, developing something, being enthusiastic, learning how to work with that and then having it all turned over in a few months. I mean, I don't disagree with it at all, but I think we have to be, I, I don't know what the rules are that are going to ultimately come back. And maybe that group of people that we weren't involving in the past, all of a sudden now feels shut out because we can't do it that way anymore.
Okay, so Matt, what we'll, what we'll have to do is, is ask our Arnie or, or City Hall and get guidance on what we can and cannot do in terms of this so that we don't get too far ahead of ourselves. Now, I saw Leslie had her hand up, but Camille, Camille, was your comment going to be on a different topic? Because.
It fits in with this and, and whoever the subcommittee is going to be. Just very briefly, I think one thing we need to be concerned about, and Arnie's the one who alerted me to this, is you need to be very careful about the process because it can be hijacked. Apparently, some localities have been doing Zoom meetings with open access for citizens and ended up seeing their meetings being totally hijacked. I do think the other piece would be if you use Facebook as a possibility to present the questions and they're very specific questions such as, what do you like? What did we miss? Are there any goals that you see are lacking? And then to have a really rigorous monitor, and I hate this for Bonnie, but I think we've all seen sites where without a monitor, they just go terribly awry. So you put the Facebook questions out, give people seven days to respond, and then give Bonnie time to collate those. And, and to Matt's, I think it's a really good insight. Whatever we do probably needs to have the provision that this is an interim action and following post-COVID shutdown, there would be an additional public forum. So everything would still be approved contingent upon a final public hearing is a possibility. But I would welcome Jamie's insight on all of this.
Thanks, thanks, Camille. And then Leslie, I think you had your hand up.
I was just going to comment. I think, I think this proposal sounds like a great idea. I agree with Jamie. I think we could get, actually get more people involved by having it online as well as possibly having an in-person platform. Get into Matt's question. What, what, we are allowed to use technology. We can air our meetings and take questions that way. The issue is whether we have to, as Planning Commission members, have to be in one location having the meeting that way. So until June 10th, we're not going to. And after that, we don't know. But we can still, regardless of how we're doing the meetings, we can still air it. So I, I would definitely be in favor of having them plan what the best format for that kind of presentation is. Because I do think we can get better input on it.
Thanks, Leslie. Jamie?
Um, this is Jamie. Yeah, all the, to Camille's concerns, that would be the, that is the challenge of the technology and monitoring stuff and making the whole situation workable for anyone involved. That would just be for Blake and I to try our best to figure out. And in turn, to Matt's point, I mean, always a good point, but to my understanding of the rules for these meetings, we wouldn't be violating them so long as we advertise appropriately in advance.
Thanks, Jamie. Matt, Matt, were you putting your voice up as your hand or?
No, I saw John's hand go up, so I stopped.
Okay, go ahead, John.
I concur. Great idea, Pat. Two terrific subcommittee members. Do you, I'm assuming you two would take suggestions from the rest of us? Because I think we could all do a little research on ideas and how to do it, bringing our own perspectives on it. I mean, just doing a quick Google search on public hearings in COVID, the, the page fits, fills up. So, you know, people are adapting and trying to figure out how to do it. I think it was Camille or Leslie said that this will be the challenge to the Berkeley Group when we go with this format, which is, I think, makes a lot of sense. The, the graphics will have, will be important. And also, as Camille was saying, maybe there's ways of asking questions. You know, and, and to help target the kinds of response rather than just, what do you think? Because sometimes if you just, and, you know, anyway, I think that's, you'll get a better, more informed feedback.
Thanks, Sean. So we'll, we'll want to, we'll want to let the Berkeley Group know that this is the direction we're, we're looking and thinking about this and, and see what input they might have for Jamie and Blake as we, as we kind of research this a little bit. Leslie?
Just wanted to add, because we have this option and I don't see any reason to wait, you know, in the past, before, previously, we had talked about having it in May and if not in May, wait till fall. I think with all these changes, we no longer have to wait because we're going to have, everybody stays put. So I think we can go ahead and proceed in June and keep our momentum going on these. And I agree with the comp plan debate and we talked about it. And I agree with the comp plan debate, and we talked about it at a previous meeting. I think as we review the chapters in the next couple, uh, couple weeks, we need to think about what issues we're struggling with and highlight those during the presentations, you know, give overview of what our plan covers, but specifically point out, you know, we, what do you think about neighborhoods? Give them, you know, should, how should we, should we be protecting them, or, you know, what, what does that mean then? Questions.
Okay. All right. Sounds like we've got a, got a plan. Um, and, um, I guess at our next meeting, you guys can tell us what you've thought of. Yeah. Uh, Arnie?
I could just make one clarification. If we have Jamie and Blake on, on a committee, if there are any suggestions for them, if they could just be filtered through me, so that they can just not be monitored, but just so that they're more public, even in this time. And I'll pass them along, and we'll just go through me.
Standard operating procedure.
Okay, good. Thank you. All right. Um, so should we, the, the third order of new business that we added to the agenda was to talk about the role of the Berkeley Group moving forward, I believe?
Correct. And sorry, sorry, this is Arnie. As John had it stated, um, uh, just a discussion about the contract and how it impacts future work of the department, and specifically for the comp plan. As I understand the revised contract, and this was being discussed prior to what's happened with COVID, in that we would not have that full-scale access to Berkeley Group, it would be scaled down to where you're paying for my services on a daily basis here, and then each of the individual items, such as finishing the comp plan, where if we get into the subdivision ordinance or any other, um, tasks, those would be separated out as separate tasks or separate contracts. Um, and then the question was, how is that going to affect the comp plan? We've already talked about the schedule a little bit, but if there is, if we go forward with, if council decides to go forward with an amended contract, then there would be a specific item to finish up the comp plan that council would then have to include in their budget for the next fiscal year.
Thanks, Arnie.
Thank you.
Any, any questions, this is Pat, any questions, uh, for Arnie or clarifications or? We're good with all this?
Yes, I.
Good job.
I raised, I raised it with Arnie, and I noted also that I, uh, as Leslie said, I don't want to lose the momentum that we've developed. Especially as the Berkeley Group has, I think, as of late, with the addition of a of a experienced consultant, has made a difference in the comp plan. And the quality of the work and the thinking and the approach, it's a much more strategic, um, integrated approach now. And so I just don't, in, in this discussion, because sometimes they happen, these discussions happen, you know, administratively, I, I feel it's important that we don't lose the momentum that we have now. And if that means compressing the timeframe, as Leslie just talked about, so that we get as much work out of the Berkeley Group in this fiscal year under their existing contract, that's kind of an approach. And then, you know, afterwards, if there's revisions, it might be less costly to do that. But I think the team that's been put in place right now has made a big difference from where we were, and I would hate to lose that momentum.
Okay, thank, yes, I concur, John. Thank you. Um, our next meeting is in, is three weeks from now, right? The way the calendar works, right? Okay. Okay. Is anything else then to be said on these new or other, other business topics? Okay, great. Um, so then Leslie, do we have a city council report? What have you all been virtually doing?
Mostly working on budget, which is a moving target. And, yeah, as you can imagine, it's, that's what all of our focus has been. Right now, city staff has been maintaining, they've been doing their current workloads and, uh, just carrying on fantastically through all of this. So, uh, we, we're all fortunate to have great city staff, um, but yes, budgets are main, main concern.
Thank you. Thank you. Um, okay. Uh, before we adjourn, I'd like to say thank you to Bonnie, who is here, but we haven't heard from her, but she's made this meeting possible. So thank you very much. Appreciate it. Uh, and of course, we see Arnie, so thank you, Arnie, too. We can see you with Bonnie, uh, represented, I guess, by the icon of the city there, the city. So thank you very much. Okay, um, would anyone like to hang around virtually in the, the year all evening? Does someone want to leave? Camille?
All things, one of which, when, when this is all over, Pat, we're coming to your house for some really well-made old fashions or something.
Okay, absolutely.
That's one. And the second thing is, I just want to commend Bonnie and Arnie, and, and Pat, you for leading a meeting. But this has been one of the better Zoom meetings that I've attended with folks who are doing this for this unit for the first time. It was actually pretty good. And that being said, I would just take so much pleasure in moving to adjourn.
Well, hold on, one public comment from the one public member left, okay? And I just want to say thank you to each one of you, and I understand these are very trying times for all of us. And of course, I would like to say special thank you for the staff, especially Arnie. Uh, and, uh, holding the operation together and making sure the work of the city is still being done while we are all trying to figure out what the future holds. So, Arnie, from the bottom of my heart, thank you very much. I want you to do your voodoo every day. And I hope everybody joins me in this special thanks to you. Thank you, guys, and, uh, you know, this shall pass and we'll see each other in person.
Good, thank you. Okay, uh, we'll just do all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, unanimous. Thanks, thanks, everybody.
Thank you.
Thank you. Good afternoon. Bye.
I gotta stay on the ship till the end. I'm the captain here.
Drop me, drop me.
Me and you, I'm the public captain.
You guys, bye.
Bye.